...census in 2010. So the population now stands at nineteen hundred and two people. Housing and transportation, residents spend about fifty-seven percent of their income on these two things, which is actually kind of seen as a moderate amount. And then the unemployment rate is higher than state average at eight point eight percent. So these are the kind of things that we'll be talking about in the comprehensive plan. We have state of Georgia requirements that have said that all local governments shall update and maintain comprehensive plans to keep their qualified local government status and be eligible for all different kinds of state funding. Without that QLG status, Bushland would no longer be eligible for various grant programs that the state offers. It's also a smart way to invest public resources, gives you local control over the way your community changes over the years. And in general, it's just a great way to ensure that the community has a clear idea of where it's going and how it's going to get there. Okay? A comprehensive plan, really, in Georgia, there are some required sections and then some additional sections that Bushland is also required to do because it has zoning and because it is part of what's called the Metropolitan Plan Organization, and that's the Gainesville Hall of UPO. So you'll need to do, in addition to the community goals, needs and opportunities, and community work program that all local governments are required to do, you will need to do a maintenance element and a transportation element. I wanted to quickly read the vision from the last comprehensive plan, just to kind of frame what we're talking about over the next year or so. It says that historic Bushland, Georgia, envisions a highly livable city with two walkable centers and neighborhoods, context-sensitive commercial districts, and employment opportunities, appropriate development and redevelopment patterns, and a first-class local government. So this is our vision from five years ago. As we work on the comprehensive plan, we'll decide whether that remains true or if we want to change it. The planning process, there are really kind of three main bodies in the process. The local government is here to lead the process. We're here because of the local government, for the local government's benefit. They provide direction, and you as a body will be adopting the new comprehensive plan in 2020, so next year, probably in the spring or summer, we'll be, we'll present a draft to you. There's going to be a steering committee, that's all to be determined. No decisions, again, are finalized on that. The steering committee provides oversight and community background. And then finally, the Northeast Georgia Regional Assistance. We're here to facilitate development of the plan. Okay? What are the opportunities for public participation? Starting tonight, we have a public hearing, and then another public hearing, a final public hearing, and the book, and the end of this process. So that will likely take place in the spring of 2020. In between, we will have two, right now, two input meetings. They're also to be scheduled probably in the fall of 2019, so in the next few months. We will be glad to host and put online a questionnaire that takes the community's feedback. And then if the local government chooses, there are, you know, social media avenues to publicize processes and meetings related to the plan. And then finally, once a steering committee is selected, the community may choose to make those members available for direct feedback and contact with citizens. That is the end of my presentation, unless you have questions.
We're excited about you coming.
Very happy to be here.
Who appoints the steering committee?
That is up to the city. There are requirements on the state level. They, Georgia Department of Community Affairs mandates that the steering committee must include an elected official and an economic development practitioner. After that, you know, I can provide recommendations on who should be on the steering committee, but that's a, that's a local decision to be made. Typically, it's the mayor that would make that decision. You're welcome. Okay?
Thank you, Justin, and Dale, I'm going to be welcome. So if you have a recommendation or something, let me know. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Justin.
Thank you. Okay, you business, this is called something different. I'm just going to let Dale go with it.
Yeah, this will be a slight revision to this. We'll actually, it will be redesignated as review and approval of a small cell ordinance, similar to the one in your packet. However, there are going to be some revisions that'll be brought up, and we have some available. Come and look at those. And then furthermore, there'll be an approval of the CSL unity application, which deals with small cell processes. And I will now turn it over to Amy, and she'll explain just a little bit more for your questions.
And those are two separate items, because the CSL unity or unit, the unit item, this deals with the internet companies, the actually Windstream, and that's a statewide franchise that almost the city, uses the city by the way. That's a ball that's been in there for a number of years. This is just the first application. I understand that Bushland has gotten. And then on the small cell ordinance, that is the use of poles in the right-of-way for small cell facilities to be installed. And the ordinance that you have, or they can real have in front of you, I have copies if anybody wants one. It's been reviewed extensively by ACCT and GMA, so it's a pretty, pretty low government state law ordinance has been heavily reviewed. That's what you'll have for, if you have a county.
Thank you. And to let you know, this is mandatory. It's not something that I own choice, that's right. Unmandated?
Yes.
Okay. And then B, we have up here is a site availability master meter resolution. Dale, you want to tell them that?
Yes. Our code, as it's written, requires that all residential developments have separate meters that can be ran and billed accordingly to the city. The developer is requesting a master meter for the entire site for the senior living development that's going up. And what this will do is it'll be one master meter, and then each individual resident, and it's more of a condo-type, apartment-type style, all in one unit. Each one would have a sub-meter, okay? But the developer will pay one fee based upon the master meter. It's important to note that the developer will still be required to pay meter fees for each individual meter, but just get one master meter for the site. It does allow this, and it's a recommendation by the city engineer, and in your packets, we do have a letter from BMI, our city engineer, recommending, they review the plans, it meets all standards and specifications. So they're recommending approval of this, and that was for the mayor and council for consideration and adoption. Again, the plans are in, the plans have been reviewed, approved, and the development is under development right now. There are portions of this that are presently being built.
And if you want to know any more details, Justin, and how's it going, or Dale? Any questions?
I had questions earlier, and something you just said, I just wanted to be clear, because I asked about if the city would be the ones handling the sub-metering. And David said the city doesn't have anything to do with the sub-meters, that they're just for their own records. They still have to track usage.
Correct. They track usage, but you have the initial master meter, and all the sub-meters are hooked to it. So any water that's used on the site goes right through the master meter. And we give the one bill to the developer, owner of the property, not developer, the actual owner of the property will get that bill. How they divvy that up and the owner of the property is on to them, as long as they're paying for the water.
Are those sub-meters a part of what the city provides?
The sub-meters have nothing to do with us. We don't provide them, they pay for themselves. So we basically take from our lines, which are in the right-of-way typically, to our meter, the master meter, and from the master meter forward will be the developers' project.
Thanks. Okay. Old business. Justin, you want to talk to us about the city square sidewalk improvements? Do I have one more? Oh, I'm so sorry, yes. Discussions to set November's regular council meeting date, because it's Veterans Day. What do y'all want to do?
Yeah, if I could explain a little more, Mayor?
Yeah, and the city's closed that day.
Yeah, we originally have our meetings scheduled the first Monday of the month, and the subsequent, or the previous Thursday is where we have our work session. And what it just so happens, I wasn't here at the time, but it seems logical when I look back at the calendar, the Monday previous to the first, or the Thursday prior to the first Monday of the month is Halloween. So we didn't want to have a work session, I'm guessing, on Halloween, so it makes sense you would move everything back one week, which we did at this instance. It just so happened that unfortunately, the regular voting meeting then would be on November 11th, which is Veterans Day. The office is closed on Veterans Day, so I brought it forward for the city council to consider adjusting that meeting day, if I ever wish, or proceeding as previously stated. My recommendation is to move it to the following Tuesday, just move it to the next day. If we adjusted, again, back to our normal dates, we have the issue with Halloween. If we move it another week later, then we're only going to have a couple weeks between that meeting and our December meeting, and we do have things on the agenda coming up, budget-wise and whatnot, that we have to address, so we recommend moving it one day.
So you're recommending moving the city council to Tuesday?
To Tuesday, November 12th.
Do I have a problem with that? Okay, so we'll vote on that on Monday night, but right now, you can come through in. All right? Okay, old business. Justin, tell us about those sidewalks. What you going to do?
Okay, so this went before mayor and council, May 6th, and it was tabled, so the city administrator could take a look at it, as he is a landscape architect. And so what we did is Dale and I got together and we looked at some of the bids that came in originally, and the original estimates, and we reached out to one of the lower estimates that was within the budgetary constraints, and we asked them if they were still able to do the work in a timely fashion. Actually, we're having a fall festival coming on real soon, and we want to get this taken care of, at least getting the papers back in before fall festival. So we reached out to the lowest bidder that was able to do the work in a timely fashion, and we had those in your packets. And our recommendation that we move forward with the lowest bidder and get that taken care of, with the papers being replaced, and the damaged bricks being replaced, and at a later date, we can look at adding some beautifications, some plantar boxes, whatever the mayor and council decides. So that's up for y'all's consideration.
Thank you, Justin. Any questions?
The brush in here is good. Right.
Yes, sir. As the second page is eight twenty-three, it's really simple.
So we're not doing this phase one, based to, based to moving the most recent update to the?
Yes, I asked him if he would, just if it became an issue, you know, if we could do some here, do some there, do the ones that were really, really bad, and then take care of the ones that weren't as bad. So he said he could do them either way, he could do it all at once, or do it in two phases.
Okay. Thank you, Justin.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, the next is the reports, and anybody who has been mayor, council, anything else around the city for the many, many years, we have had a huge problem with grinder pumps over on Hattler Court. I think there's thirty-eight homes that have been affected by lousy, half-the-time-not-working grinder pumps. It has been annoying to the people who live there, and it has definitely cost the city over the years. We've been trying to figure out for a long time what we can do with these, trying to replace them, trying to, but they are just obsolete, and so we took a huge step, and we applied for a community development block grant, CDVG, and guess what? We avoided it by Governor Brian Kemp, six hundred thousand dollars, to go towards getting rid of the grinder pumps. And I know that everybody's excited about that, because it is really something we wanted to get rid of in our city, and everybody that lives on that road, I think they should be excited too. So we did get the grant, we were real excited, we asked for a lot, figuring, you know, maybe we'd get something, but we got the entire thing. And that, just got the letter, just got a telephone call, and I'm real excited right now. Congratulations, city council. And Jerry Hood. Okay, city administrator, what you want to talk about?
Well, thank you for that very positive information. That's very enlightening. I do have three items here, more of updates for the city. There are some items that have come to our attention, the council brought it forward, and other people have talked about it, and I get these in order here. First is the Deer Creek Trail update. Those of you that live out there, it's been a long time waiting for the cleanup out there. It has been, all of the excess materials have been cleaned up, there's been some rough grading done, seating has been planted there. There'll be some smoothing or final grading and adjustments to the areas that are seated in upcoming time. And then also, the biggest issue we have now is the brickwork or the blockwork along one of the culvers. This is non-typical in most road design. Usually, it's just a poured concrete wall that goes along there. So we're looking, trying to get a specific mason that can take care of this non-typical work on this, so it's taking a little more time. The good news is, site's been cleaned up, grass is starting to grow, and as soon as we can get that issue, a person, a mason set up in line, we'll make sure that we let everyone know. We're also considering possibly doing it in phases and actually just pouring a concrete wall now to make sure it stabilizes with the grip wrap in that area, and then coming forward and doing the mason related again. So we're working on that, but I'm wanting to get that in front of everyone, so you're aware we're still continuing to work with that. The second item is the council and some of the citizens have requested, or said a concern about how we have addressing our public comments during our meetings, like public input time when we're on the street. And the way our code, the Bushland City Code, the 2016 version says, it specifically states that individuals shall give his or her name and address in an audible tone of voice for the record. So I understand that's a concern. What we're doing right now is we're searching state regulations for Open Meetings Act, or, you know, due process and whatnot, to make sure that we meet the state standards. That's the first thing, and federal standards. If we find that our written code is different from that, I will bring back that research to the city council, and they can decide what is appropriate to address the change that we have. Unfortunately, I understand it's a concern, but for the time being, our city code requires everyone state their name and address for the public record. Okay? We do have a form that we have you sign out, that's basically for the clerk's information, because when sometimes people speak, it's hard to get their information. So we are double doing that, but it's for our record to do it. Okay? So we're in the process of looking at that, and most likely have some research available very soon for the city council. Last item I have on here, wish to talk with the public about in the city council, is the trash RFP. Where we're at right now with the trash RFP is we're doing some research, and it's, it's a lot deeper than you might consider this, because it's, the financial implications of this are a concern. The options that we're considering is, you would be amazed how many people have a concern about what color it is, and what color trash can. We also need to know if it's logo or not. We have to get, and all of this has cost implications. We also have cost implications pertaining to the day that people pick up trash, right? Mondays, Wednesdays, and Fridays all have different cost implications for you. The biggest thing is ownership of these trash cans. Do we have the city to own these trash cans, which would greatly decrease our cost, or do we have whoever's bidding on this, they would own the trash cans? So they would be responsible, for example, making sure it's a red trash can with the city logo, and they replace that. So if they do, then they're going to order it and put a surcharge on it. This will eventually affect your cost. So are you going to end up spending, and I'm going to, again, make up a figure, one dollar or ten dollars? All of that is based upon this RFP. The original RFP that we had didn't address these issues, and bids that came back were apples and oranges, and we couldn't justify them. The bid that's going to go out will be locked down tight, and we'll know exactly what everyone's bidding on, so then we can look at the actual contractors that are proposing this and know what the best value is for the city. So that's where I'm at right now. I anticipate to have this information ready for the city council to address in the next week or two, so hopefully we can have this resolved and we can put this RFP out. So that's where we're at presently.
Just one question, are we going to do one RFP though, or two?
It'll be one, my recommendation right now is one RFP, because if you have two companies that are going through this, let's say by chance we have two RFPs and two companies come through here, that's wear and tear twice as much, or maybe three times as much, on our roads. And again, you, as the public, pay for upkeep and maintenance of the road, so the more we can minimize the trucks, the better. The companies might have two trucks, they might have a recycling truck and a trash truck. I understand that. But we're trying to make it easier for billing and for implementation for the public. To have one, one proposal that this company would do trash and recycle.
So weren't you, you're significantly limiting who can bid on this, right?
I don't run, I don't run any sanitation companies, so I don't know whether I'm limiting or not limiting this. If we decide to put out two RFPs, then that's twice the work, and it's twice that, and I'm fine with that, that's what the city council wants. But it's all, it's my recommendation to go with sanitation is one bid, for one proposal in one company.
And it was my understanding, I may have been wrong, that you were going to do two, one of the reasons to table this for several months, right, has been to do two RFPs. One was for the industrial side, and then one was for the regular non-residential.
No disrespect intended, but that's my first, I've heard that since I've been here. So, and I have no issue if that's the way the city council wants me to proceed, I have no problem with that. But the reason my recommendation originally was to do that is because we couldn't, I couldn't make a recommendation to anyone, because the RFPs and what was included in the RFPs were so far off from each other. We were looking, as I said, apples and oranges, they were evaluating. So we, when I bring that information to you, you guys let me know how you wish to proceed with that.
And we did discuss that somewhat, you know, to go with the commercial RFP and residential RFP. Because we did not know if some of the companies that are available to us could do voting.
Yep. Right now, it is residential is what we were putting on the RFP. Correct me if I'm wrong, Mayor or Justin, we don't have a commercial contract. That's a whole different issue.
I'm a commercial people, use them if they want to. I don't know how I could make, or we could make a commercial business using them.
I must have, I'm getting misunderstood, because when you said not two, I guess together, I thought you were putting the commercial, which you're right, they can either use it or not. Well, I'm kind of on the private, I understand.
I'm sorry.
So, okay, I think we're.
So are we giving one for?
For residential.
For residential.
Yeah, okay, I understand.
And I think what I hear, others can express their opinion, two big things are, of course, there's the recyclable, and then how big the cans are.
And those are two other items I have in this RFP that are key issues.
Thank you. All right. I know that's a big, and we will talk about it a lot, and make sure that everybody's happy with it before we afford that open up. Okay? All right, now we're going to go into some hand foot, and.
This is a time for public comment. Those that signed up before the meeting will be able to address the mayor and council for three minutes each. The mayor and council will listen to your comments and concerns. On advice of outside counsel, as a result of threatened or potential litigation, they cannot respond, comment, or answer any questions. That is not to say that you cannot pose questions or that they would be out of order, but do not expect the mayor or council members to respond. Likewise, one should not interpret the lack of response as acquiescence or agreement with the speaker's statements. It is a time for the public to comment, but will not be a time for dialogue or engagement. As stated on the bottom of the meeting agenda, limitations on addressing the city council. Any person not a member of city council who desires to address the city council, suffer assignment at the beginning of the work session, giving his or her address and the subject they wish to speak about. Permission to speak is at the discretion of the mayor and city council. Three minutes will be allowed for each person chosen to speak. Grievances with individual employings may not be discussed. If you are selected to speak, you will be called upon by the presiding officer and then shall come to the podium, state your name and address in an audible tone of voice for the record, and direct his or her remarks to the city council as a body, rather than to any particular member. Limiting such remarks to no more than three minutes. All who signed up should be permitted three minutes. I will be keeping time. When your three minutes expire, the alarm will sound, and you will need to stop. There are many people here tonight that wish to speak, and the time limits must be strictly adhered to. Addressing a public meeting like this is a limited public forum under the law, and reasonable limitations of time, manner, and method are appropriate. Anyone who uses great fang language will be asked to leave. The city council will not tolerate disruption of the meeting by members of the audience. If after a warning from the presiding officer, any person continues to disrupt the meeting by his or her words or actions, the presiding officer may request that person to leave the room, and then seek assistance from law enforcement officials to have the person removed from the meeting.
Thank you. Okay, let's all be respectful, and we will start off with Joe Vought. Thank you. Thank you, sir. Your name and address, please.
Good evening, my name is Joe Vought, I live at seven 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 Buck Trail in Bushland. I'm glad that Mr. Hall addressed the issue of waste disposal, I'm going to address that as well. Part of my job, I'm a project manager, and I'm very familiar with RFQs and the procedures that go around them. So I'm confused as to why we're still talking about this thing about trash pickup, and Bushland for months on end. Putting together a bid package and reviewing the submissions is at most a couple weeks' worth, even with people being on vacation. I'm aware that there is such a thing as gaming the system by preparing a bid package that effectively pre-selects a successful bidder. That takes a lot more time and effort and thought. I make no allegations this evening, but there are a lot of people in this community who are aware of the type of practice I just described. And the longer you take to do your jobs getting this done, the more you lend credence to the belief that that's what's happening. Somebody at this table is not doing their job either fairly or effectively. I asked the mayor, the council, and the city administrator to get this done in the next two weeks, which is about the time I think it should really take. On a different subject, I believe that you, Mayor Ketterly, and you, Councilman Cleveland, should have resigned weeks ago, at a time when it was apparent that your continued service to the city of Bushland and its residents was no longer in the best interest of either. Your continued refusal to resign in light of all that has transpired leads me to believe that you believe your own personal political interests supersede the best interest of the city of Bushland and its residents. You have remained silent on most of the issues that have been brought to this council's attention, voting that you can't comment on issues that may be under litigation, but understand that pending litigation is a direct result of you continuing to be in office. Continued lawsuits and the expense of the city having to defend itself against such lawsuits will continue to be an issue as long as you remain in office. Comments made by Councilman Cleveland are non-defensible in civil society. Mayor Ketterly, you're in a leadership position on this council, yet you have said nothing regarding your opinion of Mr. Cleveland's comments on racial issues that reflect on the city for which you provide leadership. As a leader, your silence on this point is the same as concurrence, and in that light, I ask you, the leader of this city and leader of this council, express your opinion on his comments, and whether you support his remaining office based on his comments. I submit that if you, Mayor Ketterly, and Councilman Cleveland, continue to be silent on such issues, and you continue to be counseled not to engage your constituency, then you're disqualified from executing the duties of your office, and you should rightly step down and relieve the city from liability that exists for no other reason than you continuing to hold your offices. Thank you.
Good evening, y'all. Scott Butler, four four eight Deer Creek Trail, listening to you.
Thank you.
So in the Jackson Herald editorial daily on June fifteenth, two thousand and nineteen, Mr. Mike Buckingham posed the question, is Jackson County racist? Recently, I had the honor and privilege of canvassing Mr. Cleveland's neighborhood, my neighborhood as well, seeking signatures for the recall petitions against Tewa, beating Mr. Cleveland in the Bay. We spoke to fifty-two people and obtained fifty signatures on both petitions. That translates to when ninety-six percent of the people asked that were willing to speak out against racist actions and words and put their name on a petition, asked we all to step down. These petitions prove that Bushland is not racist. These petitions prove that the drumbeat of disapproval is being louder than. These petitions prove that the drumbeat of disapproval is beating louder than evidence. What started with two council members pointing out the racist actions and words, and calling for the mayor and councilman to resign, proved that 82 ethics complaints that you failed to do anything about so far. That has now grown over 270 signatures of citizens in the city limits of Houston. So falling back on these are outside people stirring this up is now completely incorrect, because you've got 270 people that say this needs to end sooner or better. These petitions prove that the citizens of Houston are not racist, and are not staying silent as you all have. These petitions speak loudly and clearly, and what they are saying is that the two of you no longer represent us, and it's time to go. Mr. Buffington also made reference in that editorial to quote, "Area business leaders have behind the scenes been verbal about supporting the Houston officials despite their racist comments," unquote. I certainly understand the desire of those business owners to remain unknown and behind the scenes, because who would want to alienate 96% of their customers? What is most disturbing to many in the community is the silence of an educator that is serving as a council member. Her silence is seen as condemning the racist comments and actions. I found in talking to people, the most enthusiastic signers of the petitions were current and retired educators. It leads one to wonder why this current council member who is employed as an educator has remained silent on this issue. It also makes one wonder if a child of color was being intimidated or bullied while in her care, would this council person be silent? If a highly sought-after educator of color applied for a position in the school system, and this council member heard the principal say that Wes Jackson isn't ready for a black teacher, and pulled the resume, would she say silent?
Thank you, Mr. Flot.
Hi, Irma Diddy, 79 Hunter's Way. One of the core responsibilities.